Okay.
Take it over to Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Stady.
I am present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. I'll now ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
America, to the Republic.
One nation under God. Thank you.
I need that. I need that.
All right, I'm trying to get you in on the iPad.
All right.
Joe, do you want me to read the executive order on remote participation?
Certainly.
Okay.
Commission.
On Thursday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Master and Law Chapter, Section, Chapter thirty, A, Section twenty. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated on February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. By action of the legislature, the order was extended until July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It does more. Yes, that runs us out. Yeah. All right, I have to read the last paragraph. It's over by you, Joe, I got it. Yeah. On July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, by action of the legislature, by action of the legislature, the order was extended until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And I would ask the two remote participants, do we have your permission to use your stamp to sign your name?
Yes, sir, you too.
Yes.
Yes.
Terrific. Okay, Joe, back to you.
Okay, item number three. Executive session pursuant to Master and Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one. Do they have a motion?
All right, I'm gonna take this. I'll just give you a minute.
Give you one minute, I'll be changed there.
Yeah, if you kill the phone, you're back on the iPad.
Okay, we're all set. Thank you.
Bye, Josephine.
Item number three.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I move to be going to executive session pursuant to purpose one, Master and Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A-one, discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline, or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. I'm going to take a roll call vote. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Shea votes for going to an executive session. We're now in executive session.
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're back on the record on our Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners. We're at item number four, minutes of the open session meeting of August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two for approval.
I'd move approval in the minutes of August tenth, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number five, public comment. Each meeting would have a section for public comment. We are having a hybrid meeting. Anyone on Zoom who has any public comment, now is the time. Okay, see, no one. We're going to go to number six. Appointments, we have no appointments today. Number seven, old business. We have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration. We have several.
Okay, want me to go, Peter?
Agricultural school, and we're not the rest. Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, make the following motions regarding the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. First, notice of resignation of Ann Versprill of Franklin as the one eighty-three day fiscal ed and health instructor effective eight twenty-six, twenty-two. Why do all of them? I think one of the time.
Let's do all of them, then we'll ask for a second, then we'll go to the registry.
Okay, sounds good. Second, notice of resignation of Caroline DeLuca Killinger of Rockland, Mass. as the one eighty-three day nurse effective eight twenty-six, twenty-two. Third, notice of resignation of Rebecca C. Damaco of Douglas, Mass. as instructional technology specialist, and that is effective also, eight twenty-six, twenty-two. Notice of resignation of Taisha Morales of Middleware, Mass. as animal science four-person at the rate stated effective eight thirty-one, twenty-two. Notice of resignation for Jackie Rooney of Pembroke, Mass. as the one eighty-three day instructor effective eight twenty-three, twenty-two. How about we take all the resignations, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, on the five resignations, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous on the five resignations.
All right.
Next, the promotion and then an appointment.
Yes, sir. And notice of promotion of Jessica M. Delmora of Berkeley, Mass., vocational assistant principal. She's replacing Linda Radzvila, and that is for the rate stated effective eight twenty-two, twenty-two. And a notice of appointment of Jessica Rice of Foxborough, Mass. as the new animal science four-person equine coordinator, replacing Taisha Morales for the rate stated effective eight twenty-two, twenty-two. And finally, notice of appointment of Paul Desper of Franklin, Mass. as custodian, replacing Charles Holton at the rate stated effective eight twenty-two, twenty-two. So moved.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded on the appointments and promotions, as fore-said. All in favor?
Aye.
It is your vote. Thank you. At the registry of deeds.
Yes, we just have one notice for registered deeds. Notice of name change of Janice Cahill, formerly known as Janice Cochrane of Foxborough, Mass. effective eight ten, twenty-two. So moved for the record.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that takes care of all of our personnel matters for today. Number nine, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
All right, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I get it called up here. The warrant list for eight seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-three dash oh-two payroll of the school, one hundred and six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars, forty-six cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Second item, twenty-three dash seven payroll of the county, the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars, thirty-eight cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Third, oh-eight dash oh-three dash twenty-three expense for the county, the move the amount of sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars, ninety cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And the last item, Mr. Chairman.
It is the vote. Yes.
Twenty-three dash eight, the grant to the town of Randolph, I think we discussed last week, the amount of four thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars, ninety-three cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. All in favor?
Hold on one second, Joe. Hold on, what do you got?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, through you before the motion was concluded, I just wanted to add one fact related to that grant, which I had not previously disclosed to you, gentlemen. The opioid settlement agreement between the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the maker of the opioid product is actually a multi-year grant process. I've spoken to several of my colleagues. The grant that you've awarded, which is in good stead, is year one. My colleagues have informed me that the expectation is that the settlement agreement may have several other years, as many as ten, where funds associated with the same terms of this settlement will be forthcoming to the unit of government. I cannot tell you today how much money that will be each year, but I reasonably can tell you, it'll be about the same. We have not received the full, I have not seen the full schedule of these additional years associated with the settlement, but I just wanted to let you know, if you were under any impression, this is not a one-and-done grant. It is likely to be a multi-year settlement. So thank you for giving me the chance to give you that brief.
Well, we'll wait and see. That's only good news. I mean.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean, does that mean we're committed to Randolph, that amount for ten years?
I would say no.
Or is each year a new year, Mr. Chairman?
We review it every year.
Yes, I thought. Okay, okay. Yeah, it's fine. That's great. All right.
Okay. That concludes apparel and expense warrants for today. Number ten, opera warrants for approval. We have none. Number eleven.
Brief update on that, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Sure.
Commissioner Stady, I know we haven't had a chance to connect, but one of the communities, Stoughton, has a very large grant. For the last couple of months, Stoughton has had a subs, I believe it's their total award deck in the queue. It's that project that we met with the town manager about several months ago. There have been back and forth, and also, by the way, big transition of government in Stoughton, right? They have a new town manager. I just wanted to let you know, I reached out to the finance director this morning to find out how Norfolk County can help expedite their application. It's currently back in draft form because Clifton Larson has informed me that Stoughton just needed to give them some additional paperwork, and it is paperwork to validate the application, but in concept, as I previously had stated, the grant application looks good. It looks very eligible, and we'll move it as soon as the town and Clifton Larson kind of coordinate around those last couple of elements. Again, there's been a delay here that I didn't foresee, but I believe it has something to do with transition, so I'll continue to keep Commissioner Stady, because I know that Stoughton, it's close to your heart, informed, but that particular grant is not far from barracks.
I appreciate it.
And there's actually a couple more. In addition to Stoughton, I looked this morning, Wellesley's very close, Needham's, we got a couple of very large grants, Westwood, another one, that are right on the doorstep. So I'll give you a better update on that in just a few minutes, but just on Stoughton, Dick, I did not want to forget to fall through on that, because I was out last week and didn't get a chance to close with you, okay?
Greatly appreciated. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. Opera awards, bid openings, we have none. Contracts awards, we have none. Number thirteen, fiscal year twenty-three salary budget transfers for approval. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, the county will hold a sort of an on-cycle advisory board finance committee meeting. This meeting was necessitated prior to the typically scheduled September meeting because of some factors involving collective bargaining and other personnel matters. These budgets, as you know, were approved for FY twenty-three back in May. We were notified pretty quickly that the, from the school leadership, that they were closing in on a contract associated with the teachers' union that they wanted to have finalized before the school year starts. I know as trustees of the school, you are each informed of the status of that contract. This afternoon, the superintendent, finance director, business manager are with us to explain the impact it has on their FY twenty-three budget. So to be clear, they're looking to redefine their FY twenty-three budget with the new terms and the value of that contract pursuant to the lines that will be read. In addition to the schools, there are two other areas involving adjustments, and I want to be very clear, this evening's meeting pursuant to the advisory board chairman is just adjustment-related. We are not supplementing budgets. We are not looking for any of that until September fourteenth. That's our regular business cycle. We'll get to all that business in about four weeks. But the second of the two items is relative to the facilities department. I'll get to those details in a minute, Mr. Chairman, but if you may recall, last fiscal year, because the Abrahams report had potential consolidation involved with facilities, we held several positions as temporary. Those positions have since been made permanent through your actions, but as a result, there were some bidding rights that are entitled to the employees from their collective bargaining agreement to bid into vacant positions now that they are declared permanent. That exercise started in late June, went into July, and it concluded recently with all of the bids being concluded, so this afternoon, I'll ask for you to move funds from the temporary line item up into the permanent line item to accommodate the proposed new permanent salaries of the individuals who are now permanently assigned to these bidded positions. And finally, the IT department line item included a plug salary for a chief information officer. As the commissioners may know, this office has been very active since the May eleventh meeting, getting a consolidated technology department up and running. One of the major elements included the posting and interviews of Chief Information Officer. Over the last several weeks, we've concluded several rounds of those interviews, and as we close in on hopefully the backend of this process, we recognize that the proposed salary that was in the budget may not be adequate to reach the candidate's desired salary. So in a few minutes, I'll explain the number that we're looking to approve for the FY twenty-three budget, and I'll give you a little background on how that plays with the overall bottom line of that department. Those are the three items for FY twenty-three budget adjustments for your consideration. Happy to go into any details, and I know our friends from the schools are here as well, Mr. Chairman, so we'll take your direction on how you want to turn.
I won't know.
Well, we want to approve this today because we're going to do it tonight, correct? You have to do it tonight.
That's correct. Our intention is for you to endorse the transfer sheets, and then we'll provide it to the advisory board under the same script for tonight.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Right, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Through you, of course. It might understand, John, that those items, as I say, classroom teachers and athletics and things like that, is that the way of breaking down and handling the anticipated cost for the new contract? Is that what the contract is funded through these kind of transfers, more or less? Know what I'm seeing here?
The answer is yes, Mr. Chairman. The answer is yes, Commissioner Stady, and if you'd like, I will yield to Mr. Wallace, who's right behind me.
No, no, I got it. I understand. I'm not looking for any, I just wanted to make sure that that basically I understand he took the offset of the tuition, I get it, and put it, broke it down to guidance and classroom psychology, so each part of the school was broken down, he has a number for it. But in total, that represents the sum and substance of the contract that we agreed to with the union, correct, more or less? Right?
Yes.
Okay, and the facility maintenance, you basically moved them to permanent, I understand that. And the IT person, you did an explanation. You'll give us more backfill later. I got it. Do you need a motion on this? If Commissioner Collins has a question, not to be premature.
Yeah, absolutely do. But Commissioner Collins, any questions?
Yes, sir.
All set.
Great.
So we move in the total? Joe, Mr. Chairman? That total?
Yes.
One line or the other? All right, I would then move, unless John Wallace wishes to speak, I don't mean it can be rude, but I kind of see what you did there. Did a nice job.
Commissioner Stady, if you are going to move on approval of the proposed budget transfers, there is an amendment to the document that was submitted to you last evening. It's very minor. I just want to make sure we have the right numbers in your motion.
All right, so maybe I didn't catch that?
No, 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 it was on our end.
Oh, okay. So is it five-five-six-three-three-five? I'm looking at a number, five-five-six-three-three-five? No? Wrong number?
That's, I believe that's correct. Are we adding twenty-five hundred to that, John?
We're working from the FY twenty-three budget transfer sheet. Is that correct, gentlemen?
Yeah, that's what I have. Yes, sir.
Correct.
Salary budget transfers FY twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, for the ease of and flow of information, and in order to avoid any confusion, would it be helpful if I read from the sheet that I have? And hopefully it collaborates with what you have. I don't want to start creating any confusion, but the lines are specific to the line items in the budget that need to be adjusted. So with your permission, I'll read them, and if you have any questions, you can ask. Is that fair enough?
You mean you made adjustments on every single line? The whole thing's been changed?
No, they haven't been. I just want to remove any ambiguity, Dick. There's only about twelve lines.
My God, yep.
So for the Norfolk County Agricultural out-of-district proposal, they propose to offset the following line item increases with a total of two hundred and sixty thousand, seventy-one dollars and eighty-two cents. That comes from new increased projected tuition revenue out of district, right, John?
Yes.
So the new line item, which would be two-seven-one-oh guidance professional salaries will be ten thousand, fifty dollars, eighty-two cents.
Correct.
The new line in twenty-three oh-five classroom teacher professional salaries permanent will be twelve thousand, nine twenty-seven, ninety-six. The next line item will be twenty-eight hundred psych services professional salaries permanent, eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, fifty cents. The next line is an adjustment, thirty-two hundred for the medical and health professional salaries. It's going down four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-two cents. The next line is twenty-three oh-five classroom teachers professional salaries increase seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, fifty-nine cents. The next line, twenty-three oh-five, again, classroom teachers professional salaries permanent, forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, ninety-nine cents. The next line, same line item, twenty-three oh-five classroom teachers professional salaries, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, eighty-seven cents. The next line, thirty-five-ten, is athletics professional salaries. This is a stipend line. It is going down by six hundred and twenty-four dollars. The next line is thirty-five-twenty, other student account professional salaries. This is a stipend line. It is going up twenty-nine, excuse me, two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. For the final line, twelve-thirty, the district-wide professional salaries stipend is going up seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-four cents. So those adjustments against those various appropriations total two hundred and sixty thousand, seventy-one dollars and eighty-two cents. I think at this point, Mr. Chairman, that would be an appropriate motion to adjust the school's FY twenty-three appropriation as read.
Okay. Any questions before I ask permission? On the fiscal year twenty-three salary budget transfers in the various budget codes from the Norfolk County Agricultural School, I would like a motion for one fifty-one, two-six, three-thirty-six.
No, sir.
No.
That's the next line, Joe.
No, that's not right. There's something wrong.
I'm sorry. It's, in total, it's two-six-oh-oh-seven-one-eight-two.
Correct.
Thank you. On the agricultural school.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is both. Okay, John, would you continue? And I'm sorry for that mistake.
No worries. Actually, to that point, Joe, the next item are the ones that need to be corrected. In this case, we're, as I mentioned, we're moving salaries from the temp salary line that was approved on May eleventh up to permanent. The total of new amount, Mr. Chairman, would be one hundred and forty-seven thousand, twenty-two dollars, twenty-eight cents from temporary, moving up to permanent, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
On the facility maintenance portion. I'd like a motion.
Question? Yeah, question. Why did it go down? Which last money? What happened?
Reason now? Why did it go down? It was a calculation error, Dick.
Okay. All right, I'll move one forty-seven, oh-twenty-two, twenty-eight cents for the facility maintenance temporary salaries as Director Cronin has outlined.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the fiscal year twenty-three salary budget transfers in the facility maintenance department, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next, IT salaries, please.
So on the IT line, in FY twenty-three, we had originally appropriated an amount of money that was basically a holdover estimate for the CIO of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. I may be mistaken, but I believe that was an outgoing salary for a former CIO that was brought over when we transferred the salary from the registry. After, as I mentioned, after recognizing the market-driven costs associated with the candidates that we've interviewed, we envisioned the need to adjust that figure to one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars annually. One thing I would like to put out is because the position has been vacant since July first, we have seen a significant salary savings of over ten thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars in FY twenty-three. So when I asked for this, when I asked for this, a particular transfer request, we will be well within our projected FY twenty-three total spending due to the salary savings. So if I may, we're looking to adjust the appropriation of the CIO in the information technology department salary from one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, sixty-seven dollars and forty cents by increasing it through those salary savings of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty cents for a total CIO salary annually of one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Any questions on the IT salaries as proposed?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Collins.
So my understanding is, in putting together this revision for the salary number, this was run through Chuck Phelan, the former CIO, and he also approved of it.
Chuck was a member of the interviewing committee, and he has had completed, I mean, input right up till yesterday, that I know of. And I hope to keep it ongoing, and we also had some input from our delegates from the town of Norfolk early on in this process, so they were both very helpful, particularly Chuck.
I'm a little concerned, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
That seems like a very substantial salary. When we look at our total professional staff, that puts them up as high or equal to our county director, which I'm a little concerned about, because I think our county director should be and ought to be the highest-paid person in our county. As far as the commissioner.
You want to make a motion on that?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to make a motion on that? No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, well, no, I'm being serious.
No, I'm.
I'm not sure I can make that quantitative jump, you know, with to put that person in such a salary range. You're telling me, I guess, what's out there? This is the salary we have to pay, and that's what they're commanding. Kind of taking a leap of faith, you seemed excited about the candidate, and the committee seemed to be excited with the person. Hate to separate, I always try to separate people from salary, you know what I'm saying? It's always like, you know, it's a difficult thing. So we're talking about a person in terms of what the person commands, and based on your interview, and I respect that, having not been involved, I have to trust you, but is that the salary that IT CIOs get across other counties? Is that the salary that, you know, where are we heading? Where are we going with salary? That just seems quite a bit. I'm just concerned. I don't know.
Well, if I, through you, Mr. Chairman, to address spot-on questions. First, forgive me, Commissioner Stady for the levity. I didn't mean to add that in a place where you were being more serious. My apologies. The point is that after recognizing what the market is providing us for candidates, what we saw, and I think I've reported this previously, is that we saw a tremendous amount of folks that were in the network administrative space, and they saw that the posted salary range of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars up to one twenty-nine, I believe, was something that was achievable. That was their leap. That was their professional leap. This is the first time Norfolk County has, from our angle, gone out to the market for a chief information officer to oversee a consolidated technology division that, of course, includes the registry as well as now the rest of the county excluding schools. When we recognized that we were seeing certain candidates, we broadened our search capabilities, and we found several other candidates, primarily in the private sector, who were interested in the role that we had posted. We interviewed one of them who has performed exceptionally well. He has scored the highest of all of the candidates that we have seen to date. In preliminary discussions with him relative to the opportunity here in Norfolk County, he's explained to me that he understands he works in a private sector setting. His salary is up here. We do not pay private sector salaries. But what happened, Commissioner Stady, is that during the discussion, it was recognized that, and we all know this, as employees of a county, we enjoy other benefits that aren't currently widely available in the private sector. Our healthcare benefits, our pension systems, our long-term disability options and so forth, our vacations. Those are soft costs that do add to some level of compensation, and the candidate recognized that. Out of respect for him and his privacy, I would be more than happy to reach out to you separately, Commissioner Stady, before you sign any blue paper on this candidate, and give you more detail about what that gap is and how this potential number fits into what we think is a rational, market-based salary. I want to also tell you the salary piece is something that is always moving. I don't personally spend enough time watching salaries, public or private, but it seems every time you weigh into that, we all get a little bit of a sticker shock because they're always moving. And certainly at a time when inflation and other costs are bearing down on people, you have to. you have to be concerned about budgets, um, the growth of these salaries and the impacts they have on our ability, to balance, I can assure you that based on what I just revealed to you, that a three hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollar total salary budget line for FY twenty-three, will still have a ten thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollar surplus at the end of the year, if we bring this person on at this salary at the desired start time. Because of, because of the salary savings at the front deck.
Okay, that's, I was gonna ask you about the comparative costs, if we look at all the IT we have presently, I don't want to belabor the seat, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I know you got a busy day ahead of you.
That's all right.
We, we look at the, uh, uh, current IT, and we look at the future IT, I think part of our, um, let's say an offshoot, an offshoot, of both the Abrahams and the Ripples, was both to streamline the service and perhaps effectuate the savings. I'm not sure we're doing the second, I'm not sure we are, but if we're, we're coming in a little under, and with the market, as you're saying, uh, you know, it is what it is, I suppose we're, we're heading in that direction. It just seems quite a bit, that's all.
I.
Significant challenge.
I acknowledge that, Commissioner, and I, and again, I think it's the, it's the effect of seeing salaries rising and, 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 and it's not something most of us get used to if we're not in that space. With, with all due respect, um, and I mean this, Commissioner Stady, I might disagree with one remark. I, I did hear from the advisory board, um, back in May, a strong willingness to commit, additional dollars, um, towards the technology division of the, of the county, um, you may recall there were several, advisory board members that were interested in trying to fund, um, redundant positions of network administrator and so forth, because we were short-staffed, but, we held back making that investment until we gave the CIO a chance to come in, and assess what that plan ought to look like. Um, so I, I do expect in September, um, that you will hear yet another request to fund a position, within this department, that's consistent with the Ripples Group, and I believe the utterances of support for financial, specifically salary growth within this department. And I say that respectfully, Commissioner, I, I know what you're saying, that we need to be streamlined, it's smart about the dollars, no one's more committed to that, honestly than I am, but I do see that there is a strong interest not just in fortifying, um, the staffing that I think everybody agreed was necessary, but in this case, uh, recognizing that the market cost to get a leader, to, to bring us to this position, is staring back at us, and, um, and as Commissioner, uh, Collins indicated, through conversations with Chuck Phelan, um, he affirmed the same. But I, 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 one more time, Dick, I, I have to affirm what you're saying, I, I have the same feels, I, I know what you're saying.
You know, we're on the same, we're all usually on the same page.
And I, I really think we ought to have an off, I really think we have to have an offline conversation, because I'd love to, I want to give you that, I, I, there's more to it, but out of respect to the candidate, there's.
I would definitely want that, and would appreciate that, last couple of days, we're a little crazy, technology-wise here, at the house, so, that's, that's the reason I'm here. But, um, uh, my last point, I think Commissioner Collins mentioned, he spoke to Chuck Phelan. Did you have a chance to run this by other people who are on the, uh, IT committee? Like Mr. Kafka, or not Kafka, Koka, uh, other people like that?
Uh, the, no, we did not, the advisory board member, uh, was on the screening committee, Dick.
Okay.
Yeah, he, his role ended when we screened the initial candidates.
Okay.
Um, I didn't actually talk to Chuck, uh, Dick, um, but my understanding is that Chuck signed off on it.
Okay. All right, listen, I, it's, I want to at least make my point, I think we're all a little worried about salaries and costs and things like that, I'm sure we're all having the same thought, but if this is what we have to do to get this thing up and running, I guess this is the direction we have to take, so. No further questions, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, John, for your answers, I appreciate it.
My pleasure, Commissioner, any questions?
Any other questions on the IT, uh, salary budget approval? Okay, I'd like a motion on a fiscal year salary budget transfer in the IP department.
So, Peter, all right. What?
So you're correcting salary from that savings to that number?
Okay, so we're correcting the, um, the FY twenty-three technology salary savings of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, sixty cents.
So it's going from?
From.
One twenty-nine?
Yeah, it's going from one twenty-nine, oh, sixty-seven, forty to one forty-five.
One hundred forty-five thousand. Some more.
Thank you.
Right, so, second. I, yeah, I'll second it, yes, sir, IT salaries in the original budget and the technology salary savings are being transferred, correct? So I said, the new salary, correct?
Salary, correct.
Okay, all right, I second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded on the IT salary portion of the fiscal year salary budget transfers before you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote, and I believe now, and I could be wrong, but we need a, a total, uh, a vote of the thing in toto.
Mathematically, we had to take, yes, we corrected.
Okay.
Yeah, we took, um.
Give me a few minutes, give me a few minutes while you move on to another agenda item, and I'll have that done in just a moment, Mr. Chairman, does that suffice?
If that's a separate vote from this one though, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I still think we need a vote, a total vote on the five fifty-six, three thirty-five eighteen.
We do, but. Yeah, the number has to get adjusted, because we lowered facility maintenance temporary salary, you know?
Okay.
Four thousand, about four thousand left, about, but.
Okay, we'll wait till he does it, that's, I don't want to, but. Okay. Why don't we move to? Now, the next two items are going to take some explanation, so.
John's back now.
Okay, Director Cronin.
I am. Uh, we're just getting the, uh, totals associated with the numbers that you just approved, done by Bill, because we had that one, edit, um, so just give me a minute, and we'll have the number for you to, to a total vote.
Okay, while you're doing that, while Bill is doing that, do you want to move to fourteen first?
Absolutely.
Well, in the interest of time or not?
Yeah, it's a very simple transfer, it comes to us from the, um, golf course commissioners, um, the, uh, the golf course is looking for a group transfer, uh, associated with plumbing, uh, totaling twenty-five hundred dollars.
Within their budget, right?
That is correct, it's coming from their miscellaneous contractual services, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars, to, and that's line five-two-nine-nine, to line five-three-one-two, hardware and plumbing, same amount of money.
Okay, any questions about a transfer at the Walson Recreation Facility? In order to do some plumbing, I can see it.
I'll make the motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, to recruit, approve the budget transfer request for Walson Recreation Facility, within the, within the present budget for plumbing issues, all in favor?
Aye.
If that is a vote. Okay, that's number fif, that's number fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to go back, I have the number for you.
Did you have that number already?
We're gonna go back to number thirteen now, for the final number.
Okay, great.
Go ahead, gentlemen.
Make it a little bigger. So five-five-two-zero-nine-four, ten. Who's your number?
You repeat, Bill?
Uh, five-five-two-zero-nine-four-ten. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, then, uh, if you want motion on that?
Yes, please.
I'd move therefore, Mr. Chairman, that we move the sum of five hundred and fifty-two thousand, ninety-four dollars and ten cents, uh, and to be transferred in offset for the, uh, the salary budget transfers for fiscal year twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, this approves our fiscal year salary budget transfers, uh, we will, to be set, to be brought to the advisory board.
Right.
Looking at the agenda here, we have two other items, I'm gonna ask if we can go to sixteen before fifteen. Uh, not, one's not more important than the other, but one is newer than the other. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna be not, I'm gonna have to leave after we hear the explanation.
Okay.
Sixteen.
Oh, boy.
If, how? Bill Buckley, you ready to do this item now?
Sure, um, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I know you're on.
Item number sixteen.
We did have a extensive discussion about the interest of about a dozen com- communities within the center of Norfolk County, to explore, uh, a weights and measures program, we did last week, have a very strong discussion, let me turn my camera on, I apologize, uh, a very strong discussion with, uh, our state counterparts who run, uh, the Division of Standards, weights and measures program, so, we're just looking for a affirmative commissioner's vote, uh, which we will then take, and then create a working group with the towns to explore, uh, a lot of very important questions surrounding this, like the number of staff needed, uh, the fees, uh, charged by the different communities, one of the things that arose, as we talked about last week, was the fact that many communities, haven't changed their fee structure in, uh, decades in some cases. Uh, the possibility of a service contract uniting all these towns, uh, how a community would enter, or exit the, uh, the program, so all these things really have to be hashed out at a staff level, but we just wanted, um, the affirmation of the, commission, uh, to begin moving forward, we hope to have a Zoom with the, uh, appropriate managers, uh, who have expressed interest, uh, next week, uh, at a time that's convenient for all of us, to, uh, then begin, it's definitely not going to be something that, will be standing up next week, but I think o- over the coming months, it'll be, I think, something that could generate a lot of value, um, for our constituent communities. So that was all.
I give back. Any questions?
Real quick, we can talk more about this, as you said, uh, if you could, Mr. Chairman. So Billy, this would be, we would actually have a person, sort of like a deal, like a person would be a county, person, it has a weights and measures, and they go to different towns and, and take care of their needs?
Possibly, I, I think it, um, again, it, it really, um, kind of depends on the feedback we get from the other communities, because, uh, if, if you say did, four or five towns, it wouldn't be a person, it would be two or three people.
I see.
So, um, whether that person is a, whether it's something we facilitate, whether that person is a employee of the town of Canton or the county, uh, you know, whether that person sits in an office at Denham or in Needham, like all, all those pieces have to be put together, so really just, um, we were looking to be empowered to have those sort of dialogues, and obviously, uh, before, we got to the FTE type of discussion, we would obviously be coming back to you, and this would also allow us to, maybe add this as an agenda item, not every week, but perhaps every two or three, just to keep the ball rolling and, and keep you informed on the, on the day-to-day.
Do other, uh, counties do this, Bill?
Uh, no, there, there are a couple of, um, what do you call it, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, which is based at a Lowell, has a program, um, that's sort of underfunded and undermanned. Um, the community of North Hampton, uh, has a program that is a service contract with a couple of towns surrounding them. Um, those are probably the only two, um, that, that come to mind, that work in a regional fashion. Um, but there are some little tiny towns, especially out in the Berkshires, like three or four or five will get together, but those are towns with like two or three thousand people apiece. Um, so it's, um, but I think the encouraging part is, in discussing, with the folks from weights and measures, they really, um, have a desire to work with us, train new staff, um, tell us exactly the type of equipment that's needed, uh, and I think, uh, not talking out of school, for a while, I think weights and measures has been the Wild West across the Commonwealth, and the director who was, the sealer for the community of the city of Cambridge, is really focused on best practice, order, they have a facility out in, Ashland, um, where they kind of, um, they calibrate all of the equipment that is used for the testing, and, and they were very excited about, working with us to making sure we knew exactly what we needed, making sure staff could get professional development, so there's avenues there, so it's, I think it's, uh,
Okay.
Not, not really exciting, but important nonetheless.
Definitely worth exploring, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, I, did you say, Bill, that certain, it, there's a cutoff on the, on population, and over, over certain population, each town is, has to have their own?
That's correct, if you have more than twenty thousand people, you need, uh, you need to have your own, however, there is a mechanism within the general law, that Scott's looking at, that allows communities to, band together in a consortium, uh, and we believe we would be eligible under that.
Great, great idea.
Correct.
As we know, we are a subdivision of the Commonwealth, just as all the towns are.
Yeah.
I got, I was down the Cape, which is Bonsible County, of course, and since you've been mentioning this, I've been looking at this various sealers at, the Stop and Shop and, and the gas station, and I noticed that the sealer in Felmouth, uh, is also the sealer in Mashpee. So there must be some sort of arrangement worked out in Bonsible County.
And, and some of them are independent actors, and I think, uh, what we hear from a lot of people are, there's a lot of great sealers out there, and many of them,
Oh, yeah.
well past retirement, and, uh, as, as we talk about here in the county, a lot of the municipal partners are really, um, concerned about, uh, succession planning, and the guy we have now is great, but he's, seventy-two years old, he's talking about Florida, um, what's gonna happen in town X in two years from now, so. Um, this might allow, kind of, we, we talk a lot, when we, when we worked with the Abrahams Group, we talked to, with these managers about what, what they really envisioned, the future of regional services to be, and a lot of the things that came back were questions about coverage, really, if, uh, possible service contracts around things like building in the, building inspection, for example, because you have, um, let's say your building inspector breaks a leg or something, and is out for, three, four weeks, or has major surgery or something, where's the coverage there, so I think more and more, uh, it, maybe not as much in Quincy, where there is, um, you know, a big municipal government, but you get, you get out west and in the center of the county, um, there's a lot of need for support, where a lot of these people are independent actors really, and one stuff, one-person shops, so. I think this could be the gateway to perhaps some more exciting things in the years to come, if we pull it off, which we will.
Always good for, more use of the county, that's great.
Mr. Commissioner, uh, Chairman, if I could, through you.
Commissioner, uh, Director Cronin.
Thank you, um, Commissioner, a bit earlier ago, when I came on board, there was a lot of talk about growing regional services. Certainly each of you, um, I think have endorsed the idea that the county ought to and should be doing more for its constituent communities. We, we imagined at the time that the birth of the ARPA program, would give us, um, greater access to the community needs, as we interacted with them more frequently through the ARPA program, and indeed we are. We, we probably have never spoken as, as often and as thoroughly with our counterparts in the, in the communities as we have over the last twelve months, it was through this communication pattern, at a recent Norfolk County Managers' Meeting, where they were talking about ARPA and other needs, that this specific item came up. I want to give Bill a hundred percent, uh, credit, he is our Regional Services Director, he ran right into the issue, and again, harnessing that connection, um, and, and the interest from the communities is something that I think starts these programs on their way. I believe now that we've proven as a county, we can run a multimillion-dollar grant program, that we have the professional services, to coordinate their needs, um, I have high hopes for this program, and I, and I just wanted to contribute through you, and my, your fellow commissioners, your strong interest in regional services, I think this is a win-win for a lot of people. It's a great project for, for Bill to start working on as a, as a delta, excuse me, as a beta for going forward, thank you.
Um, I, I, I agree, and I appreciate your comments, because the manner in which this came to us is, 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 is something new, in that we have been attending, um, town managed meetings and, 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 and catching up as much we can, I'll be at there on Wednesdays, but we have been covering them in the last year or so. This is something that came out of this, this kind of give and take, and I think that's exactly what we're, we're looking to do in the future, and it certainly, um, sounds like a tough, tough subject that's worth, uh, looking at, I mean, most people don't realize we have sealers and weights and measures in all of our cities and towns, but all your gas stations, all your deli counters, uh, all your oilmen, they all have to be sealed once a year, and, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's a process that, it isn't new, it's been around a long time, but, you know, everyone's required to do it, and, uh, it, 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 it's a revenue builder on the other end, so, it's, it's, it's good that the managers have seen this issue, and if we can help them, I think we should. It's a revenue builder on the other end, so it's 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 good that the managers have seen this issue and if we can help them, I think we should help. Okay. I'm gonna apologize, but I have to absent myself and we're on item number fifteen. It's Commissioner Collins wants to take over. And I'll see you all next week.
Good luck. Good luck. Take care.
Hey, Robert, item fifteen, report on RSVP volunteer luncheon.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins, and good to see Commissioner Shay back. We missed him. Last week. So if you could hear us, Commissioner Shay, we missed you last week and glad you're feeling better. So I do want to thank Commissioner Collins and Commissioner Stady for being at the event. And Commissioner Stady. Did some had some very engaging comments in his welcome to. You know, to the attendees. I also want to thank Bill Buckley, who. Stood in and basically presented the presidential awards to to the volunteers, and I think even pronounced everybody's name correctly. I've given Bill. For all of you commissioners, the solar powered flashlight radio volunteer gift. Which has the Norfolk County. Name and AmeriCorps seniors logo, so you could use those at the beach or when you when you run out of electricity. At home.
Bill must be holding out.
What's that, Commissioner?
Oh, my. I said, Bill must be holding out. I didn't.
I'll give it to you for a price, Commissioner. I have it in my. This morning, to be clear.
Okay, so move moving this along, the the event went very smoothly. It was very successful. We had one hundred and eleven attendees. Constituents of Norfolk County. The weather cooperated and we had fans under the tent. We were able to keep the event down to a length of two hours, fifteen minutes. We got many emails of thanks. This seemed to just be the right length, the right venue. A lot of people enjoyed being outside. Under the large tent with social distancing. We had live music, good food and gifts. So I'm very pleased and hope everybody else is as well. Thank you.
Nice job, Robert.
If I could, real quick, Mr. Mr. Acting Chairman, what's your title now? Are you Mr. Chairman?
I'm just sitting.
Always for you. Robert, great job. I really enjoyed my first venue as a as a commissioner. It was special. Of course, it's always special. But I totally really enjoyed the the afternoon. We also want to make sure we note the attendance and contribution of Treasurer Bellotti, who was there. And Sheriff McDermott, who was there as well. So a really nice showing of county people. As you noted, Bill Buckley did a great job. I was pleased to be part of it. And again, congratulations to you. And all the wonderful work the volunteers do. So keep the good work up. And I'll look for that little gift, whatever that might be. I'll look for it when I get back there next week. Take care.
Thanks very much, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to item seventeen, report on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one, John Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins. Very briefly, Commissioners, the. This week there were no grand awards. I previously stated we have several in the queue. I expect something some action next week. We'll report accordingly. Yesterday, we held our monthly multi-county ARPA Zoom call with Barnstable. Plymouth and Bristol. Every week, every month, we learn more about what our peers are doing. We share ideas. First off, they all expressed deep appreciation for Norfolk County's. Lead in getting the United States Treasury to clarify its latest revenue loss. Directive that came out in June. As you know, and I reported back, we received favorable news that we may proceed with the revenue loss. Program as we had originally planned. That clarification has been shared with Bristol and Barnstable as well as Plymouth County. In addition, the the ARPA call talked a little bit about the view we had. We we as a as collective counties, we like to think of ourselves as a single brain. We want to think of how this grant is going to operate in the second half of its iteration. You know, we've got about two and a half years of time to go before our funds need be obligated. Many of the counties have already committed at least fifty percent of their full award for distribution against awards in their communities. As you know, we've been taking an approach of fifty percent as a minimum, but if you can demonstrate the need for. More than a fifty percent need of your grant because you need to obligate the funds for a capital project, we will do so. And in fact, we have so. Norfolk County has been flexible in that regard. I I'm happy to continue to report. We are still by far the more active. Granting county, however, Barnstable and Bristol report a very, very big uptick in activity in their communities. Plymouth seems to still be lagging behind with activity. And again, I think that's attributed to the fact that they still had. Quite a lot of CARES money in the system that their communities were still consuming. Looking ahead, we do envision some changes to the grant agreement that each of the communities have. We're going to revisit some of the terms there. We also talked a little bit about the Norfolk County public facing information that you all approved. Several weeks ago, I was able to share a screen and show. The other three counties, how Norfolk County is showing by pie chart, the distribution of our funds, mostly infrastructure, if you recall. And a distribution of grants by by line item of an amount. I believe the commissioners have always embraced transparency. There was some. Some polite disagreement from some of the other counties who think differently. But they all know that if they wish to look or replicate what we've done, they simply need to contact Clifton Larson. Activate it on their portal and present it, but they were very grateful for that. But overall. These these monthly calls are wonderful. They're great people. Bill and I really look forward to these calls. The county. ARPA team is working extraordinarily well. I'm very pleased with them and I think we have a. An excellent story to tell by the end of this, and all of them continue to give high praise to Clifton Larson for their service to our communities. One last item on ARPA. Earlier today, I I communicated with Superintendent Martin, who who has left after the. Brief item on the agenda associated with schools, but I'll be meeting with him over the next month or so. We want to start queuing up our first official. Advisory Board Supplemental Meeting in September with items that are obviously going to have some impact on operations. John has mentioned that there are some projects down at the schools that are large scale or larger scale that may require studies, specifically the cafeteria. There are areas within ARPA that can help offset expenses associated with concrete settings. We've explored some of those options, but in order for ARPA to work for the schools. We need to see some more information principally through a study. So one of the things I'll talk to John in more depth is. Preparing a proposal for the advisory board in September, which will be county funded. To examine the specific needs of, in this case, the cafeteria or other areas. And then call out those costs to see if we can map them. To the available ARPA funds that the county has for use in its in its facilities. And not to kind of look past anyone else. As you may recall from my Capitol discussion, we do envision our ARPA funds going forward into the courthouses. To enforce our clean air standards and improving. Heating and ventilation. So those those elements will be put in place. I have to admit to both of you gentlemen that one of the things that was a takeaway from the presentation we received from Joe Diaria. A few weeks ago, looking at the close of FY twenty two is that. The capital funds that were appropriated last year. Didn't quite reach their expected expenditure levels. We reverted some money because some of those projects just never got off the launch pad. And I take personal responsibility for that. I want to work stronger and harder with our departments to make sure that these plans that we lay out. Which do take time through bidding, studies and so forth, they get enough runway for us to bid them and get them completed before June thirtieth. So between ARPA and our capital program. I'm very active this quarter, trying to make sure that each department head knows specifically what is at stake. For funding and let's get those projects going now. Let's get them bid. So that we can secure the funding in time for expenditure by the end of June. So overall, the schools are in our sights. I'll follow up with John probably before school starts. And certainly before the advisory board meeting to make sure the schools have a running start to realize some potential. Use of ARPA funds. So that is it under the ARPA category, Mr. Mr. Collins.
Any questions, Dick?
Sounds good. Thank you.
The next item is item eighteen, report of the county director. Back to you, John.
Just a couple of quick items, Commissioners. As you may recall, six fourteen High Street, the Commissioner's Building has completed its full security system deployment. We have installed cameras on the exterior of the building. We have installed FOB readers to access the building after hours. Currently, the way you access the building during business hours is the front door unlocks at eight o'clock and it locks at four o'clock. If you try to gain access before or after those times, you need your FOB to get in. One additional piece, which was funded recently this past spring by the advisory board to complete the system. Will now go completely live and we're projecting September eighth, twenty twenty two. Effectively, what we've installed is a camera system. So during the same time period, eight AM, the outdoor doors will unlock. There's a trap. If you enter the building, but you have no credentials to FOB in, you cannot go any further. There's a there's a there's going to be a camera there now. So if you're here for a. A delivery or you want to get sworn in for notary, you'll push the button. It will activate a. A tablet here at the front desk where Jean McLeish sits, where our temp sits. And that individual have a facial recognition to say, yes, what are you here for? There's a visual exchange. A verbal and they'll and they'll push the button to allow them to have access. So effectively, the building will be locked totally. All the time unless you have credentials to come and go with your FOB. This will give our employees. The greatest sense of security within the building throughout the day, and it also gives us the remote, quick capabilities to release the entry. For deliveries and people who don't otherwise have credentials. The only big change is you're going to have to have your FOB with you if you want to come and go freely. So we are encouraging employees right now. Get the FOB. You've all been issued one. Keep it on your person during work hours and you'll be able to come and go as you please. And that includes weekends. In the event you don't have a FOB, please reach out to Mark McDonald, or if you have a problem finding yours. Again, you will still be able to come in. You'll just need somebody to release you if you don't have the FOB. But we wanted to give people a little bit of advanced notice that'll start on September eighth.
Any questions, Dick?
No, sounds good. I mean, I'm I'm assuming we'll be getting that as well, the FOB.
Yeah, again, Commissioner, if you have not been issued a FOB, I I can ask Mark to reach out to you directly. It's it's your ID. It's the ID is the FOB. It has an electronic passcode in it. Okay?
All right, sounds great. All set, Commissioner Collins.
Okay, number nineteen, emergency items topics that the chair did not recently anticipate would be discussed.
Commissioner Collins, if you don't mind, I still had a couple of other items on my list.
Okay, keep go. We're back to eighteen.
I I I know I'll be I'll be very brief. I wanted to give the Commissioners an update from John McGowan on the Stoughton. District Court. Good news to report. This is his report as of this morning. They met with the manufacturing representatives yesterday to activate both the rooftop units. And both ran for two hours. The small issues with some smoke detectors in the duct, they're going to go back to the fire panel and fix those. They're going to correct a an improper wiring on one unit. Vibration springs need to be welded down on the roof. And finally, they're going to hire a fire watch from the Stoughton Fire Department to come out while the welding is done. Currently, they are expecting this job to be complete. By September first. I want to thank John McGowan. And Nancy Rockwell, obviously, who did a lot of work on this project that's taken quite a lot of time to come to completion. But it appears at this point, Stoughton's rooftop unit project will be completed by September first.
That's great. Long time coming, but that's great news.
Right. The CIO, I'm sorry, the IT transition team continues to meet. We did not have a meeting last week. As you know, I was out ill. We met yesterday for an hour and a half. I'm I'm asking Acting. Our interim director, Dan Caparata, to prepare the agendas going forward. We talked a little bit yesterday about a substantial project that the Ripples Group reported called for specifically. To perform something called a penetration test on our outside firewalls. We actually had the vendor perform a test on four firewalls, including. Two from the registry, one from the county and one from Wallaston. We don't have the results yet, but this penetration testing should be done at least annually, possibly more frequently. We'll report any abnormality abnormalities or problems that have to be corrected. I honestly don't expect any. But it was a recommendation of the Ripples Group. Dan Caparata and Mark worked seamlessly to achieve that. And it was all done behind the scenes without any disruption to services. The registered did not have a representative yesterday, but I've asked Mr. Caparata to kindly reduce the meeting minutes to a a brief message that can be shared by all parties. So that they can see actively each week what we're doing as a consolidated team to improve the services. Technology services here in Norfolk County. The last item is, in addition to Stoughton. Assistant Director Bill Buckley and I took a trip to Rentham District Court a couple of weeks ago. We met with the court clerk, Michelle, who was great. We met Justice. Walsh, I think it is. This this is a gem of a court. As many of you know, it's been around, I think, just since the late forties. There are some apparent deferred maintenance issues on the external portion of the building, not so much on the inside. But I've alerted Mr. McGowan through some pictures and some directions of things that I'd like to see. We we spend some attention to. These are not small items. It would appear to me that. Perhaps a general contractor is needed to attend to the outside painting. Carpentry and other areas that appear to be quite impacted by weather and and ice. So the Rentham District Court is something that's in our sights right now for physical site improvements.
Just a. Hold on, let's slow down. I took the I visited that court with Mr. McGowan when I first took office, John. And we had a thorough list in terms of what was going on. I had a great meeting with the Clerk Magistrate, had a great meeting with the judge. He had told me there were some projects that were going to be attended to. And either I hope to hear that some of them have been, or maybe are still on the working list. But we, Michelle was very pleased with the maintenance department in terms of what they had done to help that court deal with COVID. They were doing a great job in terms of putting up personal space barriers to protect the people. The maintenance people did a great job down there when I first visited. That was back in, you know, twenty twenty one. It would be good if you're going to take a trip like that to reach out because if if I'm available, I wouldn't mind going with you. I like to keep my hand. Firsthand knowledge of the courts and if you're going to take a ride down on a court, that would be great. The one I'd like to go to truthfully is Brookline. I've been trying to line that up. Because that's one that I truthfully haven't visited. But Rentham is one. It's just, it's an old court. It's it's by nature. It's just, it's an old court. There's some things there we can do, we can't do. And Michelle seems to be understanding that. But by no means the maintenance people have done a good job down there, you know?
The just to be clear, the the observations of improvements that I'm referring to. Aren't necessarily maintenance related, Commissioner Stady. These are structural. I'll be happy to share the emails that I sent a lot to John and the pitches we took. It's it's the outside. It's the trim. It's the it's the it's kind of work. It's 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 limb work that, you know, is above grade. There are things that are more tradesman, if you will, or bidable. Contracted work, Commissioner Stady. That's that's mainly the focus. Michelle. Spoke very highly of of the custodial staff. There was. No issues there at all. That that court is a beautiful court. Internally, they they wish to make some modifications similar to the ones that I think you observed in twenty one. Relative to cooling and things like that, but the what I'm referring to, the observations of improvements that we need to put money into. Are beyond the custodial level. They are certainly structural. When you look at the the word district on the front of the building. It looks like the wood is pulling off the building.
Yeah.
Many of the gutters are falling back.
It's great. I think Rentham is long overdue. We need to kind of focus on that now. Now that we've got Stoughton kind of, you know, maybe in place. That's good to know that rental will be getting some county commissioner love. So I'm okay with that. That's fine. That's good. That's good. Thank you.
And my final point, just a reminder, I'm expecting the appraisal on Quincy District Court within the next week.
Ah, there we go. Right. Good, good. Good, good job.
Any more questions, Dick? All set?
No, just John, you mentioned a couple of things we need to talk about. And again, I. I have been off off the grid because of some technical issues, but let's let's talk soon and get caught up. I think this was a good meeting. I appreciate it. I've got to go. I actually have to go. That's my call right now. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, we are adjourned.